We're gonna call the Dupont City Council meeting door for Monday, August 5th, 2019, 6:30 PM. The first item is our public meeting on the solid waste implementation plan. We have Reg and I, I have Metta Block from the Recycling Center. We have Kim Crosby from Casella, and Joe Gay is here from Casella. This is a requirement in year five of our plan to have a second public hearing on the solid waste implementation plan. We did receive good news, is that they did accept that annual report for year four. We do have a letter, which is good, because it takes a lot of work to put it into their online system, and it's not always user-friendly, that system. And so, we did get an official letter accepting year four's report, which was good news. With that, I'm gonna turn it...
Could I just say that there is a sign sheet? There's a sign sheet that's going around, and I would ask you to go ahead and just sign. It looks like a lot of people did, but I think anybody left. And then, we have, we have two things on this sign sheet. One is for public comment, but one is for the swipe. Can we use it? Thank you. For this, I'm gonna submit with two of the IR next year to prove that we did it. So, always wanna make sure we get that covered. That's good. Thank you.
Okay. And who can, would you like to say anything, or have Reg?
I'd like to invite Reg and Ira to come up. These are the subject matter experts of our recycling center here. And they've done a terrific job. I wanna acknowledge what they do every Wednesday and Saturday, and invite them to give a little presentation, so that we have an opportunity to let folks know what goes on down there. So, with that, I'm...
Hi, I'm Reg, this is Ira. Actually, I worked for the city a few years, at the Recycling Center. We made quite a few changes. I think some of you guys come in, hopefully you've seen some of the changes. We're trying to send just recyclable to the center, not rubbish. So, some people are good, some aren't so good. I think that's everywhere you go. Today, Ira and I went around, did some more check, make sure some of the stuff we're gonna tell you, hopefully is correct. So, we went to Pick and Shovel, we went to Sticks and Stop, Ace, three of the drugstores, Walmart, places, certain things can be recycled free of charge. We went to Landfill too, got information there. Booked your stuff, booked his other people's stuff. Went to the library today, in the past, they brought your books down, recycled. We can't take hardcover books, so we have to pull all the things off. I feel bad for the ladies, 'cause the lady used to carry them down herself. So, this year, Ira and I picked them up in my truck, run them down the river, put them out free. So, all the hardcovers have to go in the rubbish, but I'll pay for part, we can do it for them. Ira's collecting someone that he likes. He enjoys reading, so he's...
I'm a librarian enough myself.
Yeah, so, he gets that. So, on the way, for quick hints, that we were out here, we went to the Thai. Thai before, the restaurant there didn't have any for recycling. Ira brought their stuff down to us, they wanted to know how come they couldn't. Place home get a hold of Austin's, and they get a hold of Austin's, now they have their own barrels. So, they helped them out. Unfortunately, I looked in it, and I don't think there was another one, they had three or four out there, and people put in like milk cartons. The cartons are wax coated, so they're no good. Okay? And then, that's wax coated, like in containers of wax. You feel waxy, they're no good, they're trash. Paper plates, if they're waxy, it's trash. Okay? Cups, wax coated. If you buy the frozen things, these are no good. They have a line to keep things fresh, so this is no good. If you took the metal part off, we could recycle that, and the candy metal. Anything like the spoons and stuff like these are no good either, it's just... Okay? These are just some examples. But if you go to restaurants, you find some of these things that you can't recycle. Okay? I know many members of our council, and some of the past, and I see people getting the ordinance, come down to Newport Recycle, for certain reasons and whatever. But, they do recycle out of our council, that's great job.
I was trained well.
Well, like I said, most of you guys come in, and I just know some things that Paul brought in, other people have used for it. He brought his tomato plant holders. People put them there, and they want for their garden. So, there's some other things, you know? People come in asking if they can take someone off a stove, if we can find a shirt, then we'll give it to them. It just helps them out, we're trying to recycle them. One thing we do for whatever our local, is feline friend. Anything that comes in aluminum. Bicycle, cans. We put all our aluminum together, feline friends comes in and picks it up, and that goes to their organizers. We recycle egg cartons, a lot of farmers want egg cartons. So, we save them in a box, they pick them up. Brian Elder, who used to work for the city, he does a lot of canning. Any canning jars we get, we put on his ID picture. So, not just, I think it's one of them, hopefully some of the stuff inside is local. People bring a lot of stuff that we can't recycle, they wanna know how to get rid of it. So, we try to make suggestions, what we can do with it. And the biggest one, what we use, a tail monitor.
Put it on the front lawn for free.
And it's the best way. You know, tires, bicycles, right? It's a chair, you know? People going back to school now, are looking for things. One of the businesses had a lot of chair mats that went down. I knew three or four people wanted, so I went and picked them up and gave them out to people. There's been a couple times I've gone to Burlington, and gone down to the Habitat, Humanities, Goodwill. We don't have that up here, we have NEFF, and we tell people go to NEFF a lot of things. So, you bring there. B&amp;B Derby, they'll take a lot of things, they'll bring it up there. The big thing, this is just a cleaning, right? But we try to remember, if you have old rags, you don't want, blankets, sheets, stuff like that, get in the area. Bring all that up to the vets. So, they can use them for their bedding or whatever. Some people, we can't take puzzle pieces into our recycling, right? 'Cause they're too small. If they're together, they'll take them. But if you got puzzles, they're all together, you can bring them to a nursing home. Some people have pans and crayons, you might find a kid that wants them, nursing home, different things like that. So, you can get that stuff out, and the people, you know, can use it. I'll get into some of the stuff here, well, I guess I should just go to the quick light. I know a lot of people, if you know how to recycle a flag. Again, I just got this from a person the other day. You can go to the BFW on Main Street, open up the door, and they have a box, and you put your flag in, and they'll properly dispose of it.
Allegiant, yeah. Allegiant, they can do that.
Yeah. Where's their box, do you know?
I just dropped it in the bar handle.
Okay, the bar handle. This one, you just open the door, and there's a mailbox that you put a red in. That way, people know, instead of doing something improper with it, they dispose of it properly.
Supposed to be a ceremony.
Well, that's why they'll take care of it. If that's any solid flag, just bring it down, it's free of charge. Okay? One other thing the city wants to do, we had to go out to area businesses. So, Ira and I went up this year, we just do different businesses in Newport. We go in and ask them a few questions, they have them in, and they say yes and no. We ask them a few questions. We're not there to take away anybody's business, from their haulers. We're there to just try and give them a recommendation, how to recycle something, or how to dispose of it properly. So, we just ask them a few questions, they say yes or no, then we continue. And then, they just sign it. I don't need glasses, that's what they put in there. Okay, good. What other kids say? I hate glasses. Okay? We wanna know if their recycling's taken care of by their provider. Some say yes, some say no, and some not sure. 'Cause a lot of the business on Main Street, their buildings rented in there. Person rents it, has your bins out back, so they're not sure. I know some people take their recycling home, to recycle some of the small business. Some of the business comes to us. I know a few people come down with their stuff. We wanna know if they know what can be recycled. And people say yes and no, some say kind of they don't care. And that's, we had one of those businesses, we made the issue, no, we don't do it, we just throw in the rubbish. And when we looked, Ira and I, it was cups, you know, just different things that, you know, plastic wrap, newspapers, different things that could be recycled, it's not a hard job. You put in the bin, drop it off. If you have somebody hauling it, you just put it in, they'll take care of it. We can't force them, we're just there to try and inform them what they can do. So... Again, if it has a symbol on it, that says recyclable, it's usually a symbol that says it, but that don't mean it can be recycled. It's kind of what it tells them, with name, right? Plastic and number. So, if there's a number on it, don't mean we can recycle it. Even in Newport. Newport takes some stuff that Derby takes, don't take, or vice versa. We're not part of the waste district, they are, so they take some different stuff than we do. But you can go there and sure they'll take in, we take some with Derby. We don't check for cars or nothing yet, so we're there to help people and try to encourage recycling, so. Get back to this, the reason I brought this is, this one that came down there. Soap detergents, Dawn, anything that have fluids in it, we find tons of it. People at times have enough of it, so a lot of time, I'll try to get home and wash it out. When I wash my cat boxes or different, I'll use some of these, I'll just clean out what I'm doing, to recycle that too.
It's another load of laundry.
On my plate. So, I just took this out of my truck, this is my waterway. Any kind of waterway, you can't recycle, the jar, the bottle. Even if you rinse it out clean, it's gonna be a thin coat of resin with oil on it, so unfortunately, it's trash. Any kind of black plastic, any kind of black plastic is not recyclable. Anything that has black, if it's black styrofoam, no styrofoam. So, any of this stuff, it's just trash. As far as I understand, anything that's black, there's no market for it. So, if they can't get rid of it, they don't want it. So, unfortunately, it goes in landfill. People can't understand why, but it's just the way it is, so.
Black plastic will maybe be made into a color of black plastic, so it's not as dangerous.
Right. And belongs, there's no way... So, it's just that kind of stuff, we tell people, you know? And they wonder why, it belongs to small state. North of the kingdom, it's even tougher, I feel, 'cause we're so far from lots of it.
Quick question on the oil thing. So, would that go to hazardous waste then?
The oil, if you had oil. You could do there, Derby takes oil also. Derby has a spot to collect oil. Some of the garages might take oil, but most times, they won't take it, because some of the garages here burn oil. They won't take it, or they don't know what's in it, and their furnaces are made to make sure they know what's in it. We talked in America today about it, so... But it's not Derby, we'll go over some of that after. Bubble wrap, pill bottles are no good. Any of these wax coated items. People come in, again, peanut butter jars, this is my peanut butter jar. Peanut butter jars are hard to clean, they say. It is. I went to the dollar store, bought one of the round toilet bowl things. When I do my dish at the end, I soak for a bit, take my thing and clean it out. Then I take my spray, when it's done, and spray it good, and take a paper towel. Takes a little bit of effort, but I'm cleaning out where I can. When I went to a couple places today, and we saw peanut butter jar recycling, you can see all the peanut butter on it. Derby used to take off the covers, then they had a dog that licked all the peanut butter. They used up in Derby, but I don't know, I can't see that dog getting in and cleaning it well.
What's Ozzy doing?
They had a dog up in Derby, cleaning it, you know?
Peanut butter for Ozzy, you said?
So, again, everything's supposed to come in, it's supposed to be cleaned, rinsed out. And we're constantly throwing things away in our barrel. A lot I can say, when I first got the other barrel, it was a big barrel, we had it all spilling over. Now, we probably half a barrel. 'Cause when people come in, if we can find it, when people pull in, we have a couple barrels, we take their stuff, we pour it in, try to find what we can. And if we see something we can't take, that's giving back to them. That way, they're educated that it can't be recycled, we're not supposed to dispose of it. You're rubbish, because it's yours. You're taking bags, and they're making your own rubbish. So, we give back things. Sometimes, if people are bringing something, well, how do I get rid of it? And then, we explain how to get rid of it.
I think you wanna add, Ira, just jump in, right?
Good job, Reg.
Yeah, well, keep talking.
Oatmeal containers too.
Yeah, that goes with these here. You wanna say anything about?
Like the coffee cans, the cardboard, that's got a liner that can't be recycled. Same with your oatmeal, things like that. Pump sprays, we can't take. That heat, because that's a kind of the heat treatment, but that's another chemical bottle, so we can't take that.
But some of these cans are metal, this one is, it's a cardboard. The metal, we can take, but this here has that wax coating. People constantly bring in these, we tell them we can't take it, and they wonder why, you tell them. So, we put it back in the bin, next week, we dump it, it's there again. How many times we do that a day, Ira? You know, it's leftover, people don't take it out. They figure sooner or later, we're gonna dump it, it's gonna get in, yeah, sure, it does happen. But we're trying to educate people, they can't do it anymore. They say, well, it has a symbol or whatever, and, ah, it just can't be recycled, so. Chicken and solid waste district, I know they talk about that. They do have a video, if you go online, about the MRF, it shows the MRF. There's a video, if you go on there, you can actually see the video of how the MRF works. Okay? And so, I've been to the MRF a couple times too, and I've gone through things, but... When it first started, it was trying to figure out how to get rid of things, or whether you do it. And the MRF, the chicken waste has an A to Z list. So, you wanna buy an A to Z list, and tell you how to get rid of everything. But again, unfortunately, that's Burlington. They have Habitat, they have Goodwill, and they have places to drop off wood, lumber, sinks, and, well, there's stuff we don't have up here.
Well, they do have the A to Z list on our, I have it posted in two different places on our website. And it did fulfill what Department of Environmental Conservation was looking for. Tried to make it as applicable as possible, so we do have our version up there. You have to look at it and tell me.
One of the things is, but we tell people, you know, we can't take refrigerator, we can't take ACs, because they're free on. But Derby takes it, it's all free. We give people Derby's hours. We can take soap, wash, and dryers, any kind of scrap metal. We can take them, coat hangers, you know, wire, nuts, bolts, okay? Old frying pans, bicycles, anything that's scrap metal, pop them, we can take and put in our bins. But down there, if there's anything that's good, if you have a piece of sheetrock wood, and drop it off, they take it, and they resell it, very cheap. In case you don't have that here. Derby, up in Derby Recycling, they have a little room, it's, you know, a little section, they put, people bring in, you know, jars, canning jars, egg cartons, they got some books, they put them there, people just grab, it's free. We don't have that, you know, it takes time. I have a friend in Connecticut, works at a transfer station, he just said they have the same thing, but people don't pay for their bringing, it's all dirty. The way people try to do it, just get rid of it, so.
A lot of those facilities that do have those reuse areas, closing them, because people are putting stuff in there that doesn't belong. It's actually, we may manage the waste.
Like the Yol boxes up here.
Yeah, yes.
Our Yol boxes up here, for clothes, they were putting rubbish in. So, that's why I heard they took them away, because they were located for people to use them, and people found them, I need to throw my rubbish in. I think they used to have prom, Tom's not here, I heard they used to have prom at recycling. People come in after hours, like dirty, and dropping stuff on. But now, it's all fenced in. I'd say we, you know, 1% maybe, or anything, we find something outside, and it's been very good, so. So, there's an A to Z list, if anybody wants to look up. If anybody have a question on recycling, get ahold of Tom, or just stop and see us down at recycling. We're open on Mondays, I mean Wednesdays from 8 to 4, and on Saturdays from 8 to noon. And Tom's in, you can get ahold of him, the number's on. If you want one of our flyers, we have them up here, if you want something. Like I said, we go into Pick and Shovel today, getting a check, you can take, take free. You can take any propane tanks you have, from the pounders up to the big ones, it's free, drop them off. You take care of it. You take your fluorescent light bulbs there, and that mercury, they'll take the thermostat, the mercury there too. They don't take paint, but if you get a little can... We have four hazardous wastes a year in Newport. One's coming up to Saturday, I think. Is it the 10th this weekend?
No, it was last Saturday.
Oh, was it? Okay.
It was a couple weeks ago.
Okay. So, it's 8 to...
It was the 20th.
Is it the 20th?
Yeah, it was the 20th.
It's on here. Maybe I put it on the paper on there too, but...
Just gonna make sure it's on the market.
Make sure I put the right date too, though, I can tell. If anybody wants anything there, here. It says August 10th on here, thank you for...
Oh, 'cause I thought we just had one.
That's where I'm going.
Oh, it's July 20th.
No, no.
No, no, okay, no, no, I'm getting it, it's okay, I realize we have another one.
We have another one coming up.
Can you go, figure it out?
Yeah, it's right here, that's where I'm going. So, again, if you go to Sticks and Stuff, that's Derby, they'll take paints too. So, again, no spray paint, no cans, they're flammable and sprayed. But they'll take your miscellaneous paint, we set up to probably five gallons a day. Same with Ace, in Derby, they take them, they'll take light bulbs in Derby, so. If you have the little As and double A batteries, Pick and Shovel has a box for them. Down to the landfill, they have some stuff they do. They'll take one pounder down to landfill, grow paint down, and the light bulbs, so. So, all this stuff is free, so just go to these places, and they'll take care of it. You can go to your hazardous waste and do it too. A lot of people don't want it building up over time, so just take them there and drop them off, so.
So, I actually said, Pick and Shovel take fluorescent bulbs?
So, there's places to get rid of some of this stuff, so. Let's see. Oh, the plastic. When I'm trying to figure out about some of the plastics up here, I've gone to like Walmart, they have a big box. When you go into this, they have a box. Price shop, they all take plastic. So, they'll take your regular grocery plastic bags, but they also take you, if you got paper towels, or toilet paper wrappers, they'll take this wrapper, the same bin. Cereal box, the liners in the boxes, they take that. You have a newspaper that comes in your mailbox, that, you buy, get you clothes clean, the dry clean, and that plastic. Again, cases of water, that cannot be recycled. They, if they don't listen to rubbish, they can recycle it for you. It's all free, so.
So, that's Walmart?
Walmart, they get Vista. Yep. Price shop for Shaw's, Kenny Drugs has them, they have boxes and bins, that thing for, so. So, it's all free, another way to get rid of stuff and throw in the landfill. Because again, they don't want no plastic in your stuff, like bags and stuff.
Well, they're recyclable, but not at the MRF, right? So, a lot of people don't know, the programs exist for those, not the Shaw's and Walmart, going for that material, and they do recycle it. They make plastic, that came out of it.
So, when we ran into some of the business, a lot of these guys didn't know some of this stuff. They didn't know they could take out the light bulbs, and I'm sure, we went to Columbia, usually we went to the business, it's usually one-on-one, but went to Columbia, there's like five of their staff members, they had maintenance, management, and different people, to try to understand and make sure they're doing it right, so, how to get rid of things, so. So, at our plant down here, Recycling Center, we're not a dump, we don't take trash, we're not a transfer station. So, all we take down is recycling. It's supposed to be clean, recycling. Okay? We do do compost, we take twigs, leaves, pineal, grass clippings. We've been like, put people, put their fruits and vegetables, you heard nothing, I'm going there. If you don't, sort of stuff like that, going to, it's just basic stuff. So, no meat, but dairy. And somebody brought me some squash, over the summer, or whatever, and that's what's growing down there.
I saw it the other day, and I was like...
Yeah, hopefully somebody will take it. First, at our place down there, we separate our corrugated cardboard from our regular cardboard and paper. People wanna know what's the difference, how to tell. We tell them to look for the wavy center. So, if you rip it, you'll see there's a wavy center, so this is corrugated, so they separate it, because I guess cardboard's more valuable. So, but I guess, we could mix our cardboard and corrugated, and we could separate it, so. But we've been asked to do it the way, so we do it that way, so. And again, we just break everything down. We're zero sort down here, everything can be put in one bin down there, and we sort. We put it in, it gets sorted as a plant. We try to tell people, don't put any nuts, wires, a couple of chairs come in all the time with their stuff, and they throw keys, and bolts, and bolts, everything, and when you dump it, you hear it, so you can't put that in there, so. So, we try to just sell, make sure you do a clean recycle. Any kind of metal, keep it separate for us. Let's see here. So, again, there's four hazardous wastes for the Newport City. Our next one is supposed to be this Saturday, 8:10. And our last one's 10:05, so that's out at the landfill. This Newport's free, just show proof of residency. If you have a business, you can call and set up, in case there was a fee. Electronics. People come with electronics, we tell them we don't do it, Derby does all the electronics. They do things from like speakers, to TVs, to TVs, to phones, printers, cell phones. It's all free, just bring it up there, and you take care of it. Derby does a lot, 'cause I guess there's their local area, they do the batteries, they do motor oil, they do ink cartridges. Ink cartridge, you can bring it up here on the East Main, at the front desk. All the ink cartridges go towards either the Coventry School, Orleans, or one of the schools that they resell it, and they make enough money off the ink cartridges, and their sixth grades kids go to a field trip in Washington. So, I try to tell people who up here. But they'll do in Derby. So, Derby does a lot, you know, as far as recycling for their area, so. It's places people can get rid of, instead of throwing in the landfill, that's what we want, so. We encourage people to propy, you know, recycle, retain, you know, propy, take care of, you know, just throw it to the bank. After we tell people, you know, come see us first, and maybe we can tell you that somebody's looking for something, or how to get rid of it, so. Like I said, we just take scrap metals, bring it in, do a bin, all metal takes, picks up our stuff. Again, we can take stoves, washer, dryer plates, any scrap metal you have around the house. ACs and refrigerators, freezers have to go to Derby. Otherwise, you can bring it to some places, but they're gonna charge you. It's all free up there, because it's free on, so. Derby's hours are Wednesday, they go from 3 to 7, and we're open from 8 to 4, so if people go up there after, and we're here once they got to work with their freezers and stuff like that, and Saturday, they're open till 1. Every place there. And again, we just tell people, if they got questions, they can stop by and see us. If we can't answer, try to find out. I call them, or my sheer time to talk to people, so. People bring like this, it's words, we can't take it. And if you buy the plastic ones, or we can take them, a lot of people in the farmer, a lot of them, they have the little styrofoam thing that soaks up the juice, that should be pulled out. If you have cat litter, containers, they're usually a plastic round, we tell people rip that off. It's plastic. Some, a lot of bottles have the styrofoam strap, pull that off. We tell people what they should pull off, and... A few years ago, caps were supposed to have been off. I found that was a chicken county rule. Now, they say keep your caps on or off. I still try to tell people, take these caps off, and milk cartons off. 'Cause there's a lot of liquid, and then we can see it. Milk cartons are horrible, when you take them off, and they can sit in there. And again, if we use our compact, it won't compact as good, we can get more into it if it's off, and partially done. So, we're trying to save money for the city, so. That's kind of what I gotta say, you gonna say something, Ira?
No, I'm good.
So, we do have some flyers, see if anybody wants what we give out, it's, most of the people are telling me to come in for us, so.
Reg, the information that you presented regarding what's recyclable and what's not recyclable is very valuable information. And I'm not here for this reason, but my job is I own the local radio stations. And so, if you would like to come to Moon 92, some morning, about 8:35, and you set this up in advance, I would love to have you talk about what is recyclable, what isn't recyclable, and where it can go. And I think that would be a good public service for the whole area.
Well, I talked to people before, last time we had a meeting, from the people from there. They should train, they should train everybody that works at the Recycling Center. Like I was talking to Joe and some stuff. Only way I learned, you keep going and finding out more, 'cause people ask, and if you can't answer, you feel like you're not doing a job. So, I had to go find out answers too. And I was trying to get, figure who I could find out to MRF, and I finally got Tim, and then they say, well, check this person. Well, we check, Pick and Shovel with it, you know, and they want to do this, and it was hard to figure out, finding the freezer, people are asking about freezers and stuff. You know what they're doing in, most time, they're going on the back road, the tailgate open, they drive off, it falls out, it's not here anymore. So, now, hopefully, they have a place, and it's free, and take care of it.
See, if you have enough metal, you go to the metal place on the Crawford Road, and they'll pay you for it. Because they weigh your vehicle when you first go in, and then they weigh it afterwards, know how much the weight is, and then they'll give you a few bucks for it.
Yeah, car batteries, you can bring up there, they'll give you money for them, so.
You can also put it in the bin for hay, right?
Have it been paid along now?
So, I'll send Sonny King an email tonight, saying that he may be in touch with you. I think that that would be beneficial for everybody.
Well, like, some people laughed at me when I went out to help talk to them, it's like, they should teach the kids in school. Kids are better at learning things when they're young, than mom and dad. The unfortunate part is, Burlington's gonna do different than we are, 'cause if they're waste district, and different things. But if you get the basic, what it is, paper, cardboard, clean jars, and whatever, it's easy covering the bases.
The one thing, recycling is really a whole group. When we first started doing it, to what it is now.
But it costs money to recycle.
No, I know.
Because, like I said, if you gotta clean peanut butter jar, you use it in hot water. That's why I let mine soak out, some of my dishes in the warm water, and try to do it. It costs money to get it cleaned out.
Well, Reg, this is awesome. Ira, thank you for taking time and coming tonight and getting us this part of the SLIP requirements. Well, Reg, this is awesome, Ira, thank you for taking time and coming tonight and getting us this part of the um swipe requirements, we're gonna keep doing this.
Well, like I said, we did it last week during the elections in here, you know, and that was helpful. The only reason I why, because I timed, we're down there, people bringing bleach bottles, you you hear something, you open it up, and you know, they got bleeds and stuff, you know? You know, they're supposed to be rinsed out, you just tell people, that's not good, you know, so.
Quite a chemical. Well, thanks for coming out, what I'd like to do is then turn it over to Kim, who is gonna talk about um two thousand nineteen, two thousand twelve.
The two thousand nineteen um materials management plan, as we put out for public comment by the agency. Um some notable changes, speaking of household hazardous waste days. Um so next year, and then beyond that, you're only required to do two events every year, now it's three, four. So a lot of the independent towns and alliances, some of the districts that were having these events, gave some feedback to the agency about the cost of those and the low participation, so they listened. And they reduced that, which I think is good for you guys.
I think it's great, it's better, better to have it concentrated, and uh we're still, the numbers are not up, it's costing us a fortune to have four. There's no data that led up to believe that four would be suitable for this population, but I'm thrilled it's back down to two.
There there'll still be another um uh chance at a EPR on household hazardous waste in the legislature, I believe that bill's gonna come back in. During the twenty twenty session, I'm going to a meeting on Thursday about that. So that would essentially make manufacturers responsible for paying and for collection and disposal of household hazardous products, instead of us. Um another notable change, um you're no longer required to conduct a multimedia campaign, so, or I don't know how you were doing that here, but you know, like a front porch forum, mailers, um emails, however you decided to do a multimedia outreach, you don't have to do that anymore. Um and you don't have to report your diversion rate. So that was your nine percent that you got of your solid waste uh implementation plan report. There's formula in there that you calculate that number, um they can they can get that themselves off a free try, so kind of requiring the solid waste management entity to do that is a little redundant. And then asphalt shingles and drywall recycling, you were required by twenty twenty to have a permanent collection location for both of those items. Um they understood that there's no market for drywall, so they cut that off, and they still have to do shingles. I don't know where your closest place around here to bring your shingles to, probably Colchester, right? I mean, it's not really close, so you're gonna, you can charge, um and you probably have to charge a lot, which may mean that people will probably not do it. It's unfortunate part about it.
I would think they would arrange for disposal through their haulers.
You can still dispose of them, um but they're trying to encourage recycling of them. Um and it's only asphalt shingles um that are recyclable, there's, a lot of shingles are made out of fiberglass now, and those are not recyclable.
Well, that would be up to the contractor, it's most homeowners, well, some might do it themselves, but generally it'll be the contractor
Right.
who has a big bin, and they clean, they strip your pipes.
Yeah, yeah.
Who do they bring in Colchester?
Myers.
Is that a big cleanup?
He's got a fairly good sized C and D recycling facility, and he he takes shingles, he separates them out, um he grinds them up, and he takes them over to the quarry, Whitcomb, who mixes them with their paint and mix.
Can they put that in DI trucks in that plant? If they, they always come up here with stuff, with rubbish, and they all go back empty. Or can't they fill them up and bring it, save money?
Something like that could be, I'm not sure how.
The challenge is.
I know, they're all the ways.
Takes a long time to fill it up, right?
We're sending a truck down, we're gonna drive, and truck come back empty, and then they're bringing up dumping, it's going back empty. Same when I say without recycling, they come up here with all that stuff, to tracks, and they go back to the MRF empty. So they can't take take certain recycling from here, put on that truck. I know the reason I was told that the girl's not big enough to get the trucks in, but I heard they're gonna be, build a bigger plane out there. All these trucks are going back empty, so that's polluting the air, and so why not have these trucks go over here, and go back there?
That's another equation.
I know, and how you do it, you gotta weigh them somehow, I know, but
Right.
but there's there's the problem, but you set up, unfortunately, you got scale, gotta load it, I know, but they're all going back empty.
Um and so the new materials management plan will be approved by December of two thousand nineteen, and then you'll have until July first, twenty twenty, to submit your draft to the state for approval. And then the new plan would start twenty twenty-one, January first. Um universal recycling laws and things coming up, um July first, twenty twenty, food waste will be banned from the landfill for everybody, regardless of distance to facility.
I look at all these unfunded mandates coming out of.
Yeah, um and then by July first, twenty twenty, um this is new as of the last legislative session, um haulers, self-solid waste haulers will be required to offer a collection of food scraps from non-residential customers and housing units with four or more apartments. They can be exempt from offering if there's another hauler already offering this service in the area, and that hauler has the capacity. The latter part, I'm really not sure how they're gonna track and enforce or monitor, yet to be seen. So those are the notable changes, I think you can.
Sure. So that concludes our presentation.
Questions, questions from anyone before I close this aspect?
Yes, I don't think we covered the six-pack ring.
Oh. Yeah, that's.
They're not duck necklaces.
Right.
No, that's not recyclable.
You cut them, throw them away?
They just crash, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I bet some of them, those are number of rush.
Yeah, it's just plastic, it's not recyclable.
Well, I learned about the coffee can.
But if you look.
I changed the brand and didn't realize the can wasn't recyclable.
Again, and if you look through our flyer, there's a page and a half of not, I mean, we didn't go like Q-tips and pop circles to, there's all this stuff you find in people's stuff, and it's not recyclable, so. Napkins, tissues I hate.
Used tissues are not recyclable.
Harder six-pack rings.
The hard one?
Yeah, the hardened ones.
Right, yeah.
The gray ones, the white ones are, the black ones are not.
Right.
I go to the recycle center quite often, and Reg is always looking through my bag. I'm getting better at not having any bad things, but I have been in line and saw people that just have a bag of trash that they wanna throw in the barrel. You know, and when I say a bag of trash, there isn't any recyclables, it's just trash that they have in their bag in their car.
We sit back a few, does it come at you, no, I'm not gonna pick through it, if you want stuff.
I really do watch people.
Very good.
It does.
Thank you, everyone. Close that aspect, we have the sign-in sheets. Let the kind of clean up.
It's very important, thank you.
Well, like I said, nobody backed them down, so you can have them all put it down.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll move on, the next item is to approve the minutes of July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, I would entertain a motion. So motions to be made, is your second? Being seconded, discussion on the minutes, then all those in favor say aye. Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Next would be comments by members of the public, Mr. James signed up.
Good live.
Is it okay if I sit down? I'm getting a little.
It's okay.
I'm getting a little, anyway, um.
Too much umpire.
I'm telling you, man, too much playing wrong. The um, I just wanted to give you a quick update, and uh thank you for your um involvement in the in the Outbreak Fest weekend. It was uh, it was great to see um the council and the city representative parade, and uh the events following the the parade and et cetera. The mayor and I welcomed three hundred to four hundred leather-clad motorcyclists to uh to Newport, and that was a lot of fun. We cut a ribbon, uh the mayor gave the motorcycle club a key to the city, and there's a rumor going around that the key to the city opened every pub, I'm not sure, but uh but it was.
You could have, you want what?
It was a lot, it was a lot of fun, and and um the story that gets back to me is that the uh Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association felt so welcomed by Newport and Newport area that they want to come back again for for another convention, and uh I hope that happens, and I suspect that it will. Um to give you uh just an update on on where the chamber wants to be headed in the next month or so, we are, we are, we've talked with um Parks and Recreation about the Fall Festival and the Sidewalk Art Show and and that kind of stuff. And we're looking at September twenty-eighth for that event, I put up an application into Parks and Rec. And uh that would um include the Antique Car Parade, the Chili Fest, the Sidewalk Art Show. Start about eleven o'clock in the morning and conclude about three in the afternoon, same as last year. We took a cue from St. Johnsbury, not the municipality, but simply the area, that um in September, certainly from the middle of September on, they have a an event every weekend, and we thought that that would be uh fun if we could have something that went on every weekend to encourage people to come to Newport and to see something, do something, so our thought is to uh separate out the scarecrow contest from the Fall Festival and start that September twenty-first, which coincides with uh with um getting the stuff out of the fields, harvesting. And that would be, the scarecrows again would be on Main Street and the businesses and homes, just like last year. October fifth, uh the trains are coming back to Newport, the the little trains, you probably saw those cars that were down here. And they're coming back October fifth, and so um we'd like to have a tractor show at the Hebert Building property on October fifth. And uh trains would bring people into Newport that weekend, and the event, plus anything else we can cook up, would provide them something to see and do, so. Um the official uh form has been sent to Parks and Rec, but but I ask you if there's if there's nothing that you can see that's gonna get in the way, I'll start to organize that in a more sincere manner, especially I already heard from Miss Vermont today, and she wants to come up for for September twenty-eighth. And uh the car club is is open, and I wanna make sure that we get in touch with them in time, so. If you don't see any issues, of course you will see the the permit request, if you don't see any issues, I'll continue on.
What was the first September date?
September twenty-first would be scarecrow contest. Okay. Does that sound decently good to everybody?
Sounds great.
Great.
Well, if you if you listen closely, you can hear that fish calling my name, and I'm gonna go fishing. Thank you, be well, see you later.
I'll announce a public comment, I'll sign it, so we'll move on. New business, I have one item that came up, I was kind of like new old, but I'll look it up. We had received a grant for a small hydro seeder, and this is just has, um it was for fifty-two hundred dollars, and this is just the drawdown that we all have to sign out for. If anyone's been by the Fairland Street Pump Station, they use the hydro seeder up there to seed the 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 area that they have done up for the new pump. And so this is just something that we all have to sign, to approve the drawdown of the grant funds, which was fifty-two hundred dollars. Well, we need a motion, we just have to sign it, right? We already approved the grant before, so this is just the authorization.
Form, we've received the um equipment, we've paid for it, this is our reimbursement, this is the drawing.
Yeah, we all signed up.
Lines?
Lot of the lines, but we can actually sign it.
Uh this is hard, my name is not there.
Yep, yep, just, yeah, that way I won't lose it.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll move on, Mr. Johnson, do you have new business?
I do, I've got a uh pick-a-licensure request, I'm gonna be approved, and it's not, this is for all its parts, and it's got some beer. So, I mean, all the requirements, all the paperwork's there.
I can't really support that with my day job without a study on outlet density, um it's abusive alcohol is highly correlated with how many outlets there are per area, and without knowing that this was coming, I would prefer not to sign it. I'm not suggesting that you guys don't, but I would like to abstain from that.
It is kind of surprising.
Yeah.
But. I don't know, it's just kind of, this must be something new.
I haven't seen an article recently that suggested that they weren't, but I didn't expect it right here.
I guess I have to look at it as free enterprise in a way.
Yeah.
Cause it's people's choice, whether to go in and purchase or not, so.
It just stands as a.
There's another store's own beer.
This is another store, I know.
You just see this conflict of interest because of your position of the daytime job?
Pretty much, yes, yes, thank you, that's a good way to put it, yeah.
What's the store?
A dollar.
Dollar, it's a dollar tree, dollar candy, dollar.
Family, right.
You can't get rushed across the street, you need to please.
There's all these stores are trying to find the end to get the the bucks that you're making out of this retail market. So competitive now, everyone's trying to find that store, end. I have new business, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, the only thing I got, uh Thursday, my office will not be open from eight to twelve. We will be there, but we can't, nothing, we're gonna be on your server, and then it takes four hours to get it in. That kind of shuts us down.
Will the noise keep you awake?
No harm, it's the hungry.
It's that weight noise of these computers, yeah, okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, any new business?
No, thank you.
I don't have anything new, anything new?
No, thank you.
Okay, we're moving, old business, Mr. Johnson? I don't have anything, any old business? Nope, any old business, okay. The next Berkeley scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Can I say one thing about that? We're talking about assembling the meeting at Gardner Park for a display um from our canine Aussie.
That's right, I forgot.
Um uh patrol, patrolman Lilis would like very much for the council and the public to see what that that investment has um done for the city. And so when you get your agenda, um we're gonna know that the weather is very nice, okay, so it'll be an evening just like tonight. We'll have a display starting at six-thirty, uh congregate there, I think you'll call the meeting to order.
And then we'll adjourn it and come back here.
Right.
Cause I, when it was brought up to me, I thought, well, maybe we could do it in the gym, like they've done for the kids, but I wanna demonstrate some additional
Techniques.
techniques with the police car and the. with the police car and the police dog and all that. So that's where they thought Gardner Park was a good location.
Should be very nice.
We have done that before, we've met here, we've adjourned temporarily to walk, and then come back, so.
So it'll be indicated on your, on your agenda very clearly. We'll come back here, I think we're going to have a display from Pedro on our mission security system for our pump stations and our plants. And Charlie will give a presentation on our Petra software. So it'll be a nice presentation.
That system that Pedro uses is amazing. You can go in at any time, you can see exactly what a pump station is. He has demoed it to me in the office, I thought it'd be good. Thought, Laura, I thought it'd be good for the whole council. Just shows how we can really truly monitor our systems. This is great.
It's funded by taxpayer dollars, it's going to be around next.
It's going to be a good, it's a good program. Okay, so then our next meeting will be Monday, August 19th, 2019. And we do need a motion to adjourn at 7:12, 7:30. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, session ended, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, we adjourn.